Good morning. It is Wednesday, April 19th, 2017, right at nine o'clock. We're in the Senator hearing room, 555 Court Street, Northeastern Salem, for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Start our meetings with an opportunity for the public to make comments. They don't often take advantage of it, but we do have at least one signed up. Perhaps two want to come. Davida Gilbertson, one of you, you want to come up? And just go ahead and tell us what you like.
Well, as you know, my name is Davida Gilbertson. Last week, I received a letter from the Marion County Sheriff's Department that informed me that I was no longer to have my venue. I bought this property three years ago, but I did do my homework before I purchased it. There is no zoning code in an unincorporated area in Marion County for a venue. I searched and searched and searched, and then I called the Planning and Zoning, and I went to Planning and Zoning and was told, "You can have a venue, but there is no zoning code for that. But we will shut you down if we get complaints." I've never had a complaint. I don't even hardly have neighbors. And I don't know where the sheriff... I don't understand where all this is coming from. In the letter, he doesn't even tell me what code violation that I have broken. But he does tell me the code violation for noncompliance, which I find baffling. It just doesn't... The whole thing doesn't make sense to me. Most of my property where the venue... We do weddings, where that takes place, is actually on railroad property. And I have permission from the railroad to do that, to have weddings. This is the... We are zoned special agricultural. There is nothing in this 28 pages that says that I can't have a venue. You can have a golf course. You can have a dog training facility. It's very, very open to what you can do on special agricultural. When you bring up looking for planning and zoning, when you bring up venue in the search bar, this is the page that comes up. It's completely... It says, "This page is intentionally left blank." There is nothing, nothing there. No zoning whatsoever. I'm just very confused. I really don't know what to do. My property... I have photos, if you guys would like to see them. The property is very small. It's only 4.5 of an acre. But what makes it an acre and a half is the railroad property.
So can I just say, we can't resolve this here today? Have you called Code Enforcement when you got the letter?
No, I have not.
So that would be your first step, to call Code Enforcement. And Chris Baldridge, who is the lieutenant, right? That's over that. And I had a meeting yesterday, actually, about how the letters are crafted. And they're going to go back and kind of look at it because they tend to just say, "You're in violation, and here's the noncompliance," and it's going to be more educational. But they really want you to call when you get that letter so that they can start talking through with you what your options are. The other thing I would say is that land use is governed by state law. And so if you're in an agricultural zone, there are a lot of things that are limited in agricultural zones. And so that would be a discussion with the Planning Department, I think, to kind of find out what's going on with that. You can have a commercial use in conjunction with farm use. You also can have... We have an agritourism, kind of agribusiness...
Right.
...policy that we had. And so just to discuss with them those. But here, we can't resolve that. I mean, this is just an opportunity for people to come and make public comment, and it goes on the record. So... But I appreciate you coming. But I would strongly encourage you, first, to call Code Enforcement, and then to call... Ask for Joe Fenimore when you call Planning, and tell them that Commissioner Carlson told you to call Joe, all right?
Joe... I'm sorry, last name?
Joe Fenimore.
Fenimore?
Yeah, right. So talk to the person at the top, okay?
Okay.
And tell them that Commissioner Carlson referred you to him, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Just because I'm thinking of it as related. I know the counties had issues really before I came, especially with wedding venues. I hear stories of one in Butteville and stuff. And I've always kind of wondered about that. And perhaps I would like to look at what we do. It's timely. I have a daughter getting married next week, and we'll be having a reception in a farm in Clackamas County. So how does that happen? I think we need to look at these things.
Right. It falls under the agritourism, but generally, the law is that there needs to be a nexus between the agriculture and the venue, right?
Right.
So if it's a lavender farm, you have a lavender thing. If it's a winery...
Wineries, yes.
Right. Yeah. So they'll have to figure that part out.
I like all that, but I'd like to see if we do have some discretion.
Right.
All right.
Yeah. We've changed the law on it. Remember, you were on the task force, and so was I.
Yes. And you're a lot more effective.
Yeah.
All right. Let's continue. Our next item is our consent calendar. And Commissioner Carlson, if you would.
All right, Mr. Chair. I would move today's consent calendar. Under Business Services, approve an order adopting the revised administrative policy, number 517, Health Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act, Protected Health Information Privacy Rule Requirements. Under Finance, approve an order adopting the revised administrative policy, number 909, Establishment and Use Procurement Cards. And under Public Works, receive hearings officer's decision dismissing Administrative Review Case Number 17-008, Lobdell.
Second motion. Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Those are approved. We have four or five action items this morning. The first one is a proclamation. We consider approval of a proclamation that designates the week of April 23rd to 29th, 2017 as Volunteer Week in Marion County. And Lisa Miller is here. We were talking before the meeting. She was hoping no one would be here. So all of you that are here, try to pretend that you're not.
No, 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 no. I'm not actually hoping no one was here. It's not a huge crowd.
Okay.
Good morning.
They'll be here next week, all right?
Next week, we'll be a huge crowd, yes. Good morning. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I'm Lisa Miller, Business Services, Volunteer Services Coordinator. I am here this morning to give you a little bit of information about Volunteer Week, National Volunteer Week. I have a proclamation for you to consider. My role here at Volunteer Services is to provide support and encourage volunteerism in all of our departments. And along with that role, one of the great things that I get to do is actually witness the outcomes of these volunteer placements in our departments. We have a lot of volunteers around our county. I can tell you, they're doing great work out there. And they do... They provide their time and their talents without any kind of assumption that they're going to get any kind of recognition or anything like that. We have about 1,700 volunteers, actually, in the county serving last year. So this morning, I bring forward to you for consideration a proclamation to proclaim next week as Volunteer Week in Marion County to recognize these volunteers that we have working in our community. A little background about National Volunteer Week. It first started in 1974. President Richard Nixon actually signed a proclamation, or an executive order. And every president since then has proclaimed National Volunteer Week. It's just a way to inspire and recognize our community members that are becoming involved in our community and seeking ways to engage more. Some of the activities that we have planned for next week to recognize our volunteers, all of our volunteers will be receiving a thank you note and a small gift of appreciation for their time. I'm preparing some stories with those outcomes from our volunteers that hopefully I will get to share with you next week. And then, of course, we have some volunteers that have been nominated for awards, and they will be present next week with their family. And it'll give us an opportunity to recognize a few of the volunteers. So with that, I provided you with the language for the proclamation. And I ask that you would consider proclaiming next week, April 23rd through 29th, as Volunteer Week in Marion County.
All right. Thank you. Look forward to next week. And I suspect you also show the value to Marion County that these volunteers provide.
Absolutely, yes. It's a surprise. I'm saving it for next week.
So today is just very low-key, and next week's going to be the big party, then?
Next week is the big party, yes.
Well, so in that case, I will go ahead and move the approval of this resolution... Proclamation, sorry, designating the week of April 23rd through 29th, 2017, as Volunteer Week in Marion County.
I'm going to second it, but I'm just looking at one line. It says, "The government by itself cannot solve all our social problems." I thought that's what our job was. I thought we didn't. No? All right. And I'm going to second the motion, then. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion's approved, and now we will read that proclamation. If you'd begin, please.
In the matter of proclaiming April 23rd through 29th, 2017, to be Volunteer Week in Marion County, proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on April 19th, 2017. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take actions that change the county; and whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service; and whereas volunteers in Marion County have undertaken responsibilities that promote the general welfare of the county; and whereas in providing these services, volunteers have demonstrated a spirit of personal concern and wholehearted willingness to help others; and...
Whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference; and whereas experiences teach us... Teaches us the government by itself cannot solve all our social problems; and whereas our county volunteer force of citizens is a great treasure; and whereas these volunteers ask nothing more than the satisfaction of a job well done; and whereas these individuals are most deserving of appreciation and thanks. Now therefore, we, the Marion County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 23rd to 29th, 2017, as Volunteer Week in Marion County, and urge our fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. So, you, and we'll look forward to next week.
Thank you.
With a big crowd.
Yes, a big crowd.
Our next item is, we consider a resolution supporting the passage of a transportation package by the 2017 Oregon State Legislature. Barb Young, Government Affairs, Legislature Expert, go ahead.
All of the above. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Barb Young, Government Relations Manager for Marion County. Excuse me. Before you today is a resolution to support the transportation package that's currently being prepared over at the legislature. About a year ago, the Joint Transportation Preservation Modernization Committee began its work on this package with a... I'm getting... Thank you, Kristi. Is that better? Okay. About a year ago, the Transportation Committee, which was a special committee created, which is the Preservation Modernization Committee, began their work on this big package that's before the legislature today. They started with a tour of the state, looking at all of the different infrastructure needs statewide. And while they were going around on their tours, they were able to meet with the local folks and local elected officials, again, to look at what are the priority needs in those different areas of the state. Commissioner Brintano also had the opportunity to participate in this tour when they were going up the Woodburn or the I-5 corridor. They hit Woodburn first to see the overpass and the completion of that project and how the improvement to that overpass have been working out so well. So then they went on to the I-5 Donald interchange, which is the next interchange that we're really concerned about for safety needs and whatnot. And we're able to point out the dangers and safety concerns on that interchange. The joint committee has taken all of this information that they've been gathering, and they've been working for the last two and a half months in subcommittees to then form one big package. Those subcommittees are the Maintenance, Preservation, and Seismic Subcommittee, the Congestion Subcommittee, Transit, Safe Bike, Safe Route, and Safety Subcommittee, and the Intermodal Subcommittee. While they are working in the subcommittees, they did ask cities and counties for their priority infrastructure needs in their counties. And for Marion County, we submitted the Newburgh-Dundee bypass as well as the Donald-I-5 interchange. People may wonder, why are you doing a project in Yamhill County? We've been working with Yamhill County for many, many years on that bypass, and we would like to see the completion of that. It does have a huge impact on North Marion County, and that is part of our problem also at the Donald-I-5 interchange. So those were the two priorities we submitted. It doesn't mean that they'll be funded, but at least they're on a list that hopefully we can continue to work towards funding on those. Again, the committee's worked in the last two and a half months on the... In those subcommittees, they're bringing all of their information together. The last couple of weeks, they've been working on that. And they hope to have a final bill to... Or one bill. I shouldn't say final bill. One bill for everyone to begin to look at and deliberate on by the end of this week or the end of next week. With that, the resolution before you today supports this transportation package that they're working on. I'm happy to answer or attempt to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Barb.
Well, no questions. I know Association of Oregon Counties was anxious that we'd get this because they're compiling these from all over the state. So I'm glad that we're doing this today. Also, I wanted to add that even though we put in those two priorities, Corden Road is a big priority of Marion County.
Correct.
And I think City of Salem has made it their priority. And so we want to make sure we support each other because there's just all kinds of reasons why Corden Road needs to improve that I won't get in here today. So those are my comments.
Thank you. There's one whereas. They let them slip in just for my sake, I think, but I hope it represents the county. Obviously, I serve on a number of traffic committees. I've gone around and I don't say I know, but I'm aware of so many different problems in Oregon. And so truly believe we need some increased revenue to deal with these problems. Newburgh-Dundee, as you talked about, Donald, they're all big problems. And there's other problems. The list, what did I see? Like a billion dollars just in this three-county area of unmet need just to get by? One of them that we don't talk about a lot, but just watch in the paper, that stretch 22 west of Salem from Eola, the 51 exit. It's almost a weekly occurrence tragedy, and that has to be addressed. So we need more revenues. But last year, the legislature passed this, and I'll use my language, so-called Clean Fuels Bill, that just violates all the trusts that I think that Oregon's have concerning fuel taxes. It takes money derived from fuel and puts it to somewhere they don't even save for some good cause with no results. But I do know this much about adding this contaminant of more ethanol and others into our fuel. It's less mileage damage to engines, and it's just wrong. So I had to say something. And I know the legislature's grappling with the same problem. Unless they can get that revised or repealed, it stands in the way of making some real progress on our road systems here in Oregon, and especially that we're concerned about in Marion County. So I appreciate showing support in this resolution, but still getting that last dissatisfaction in there. And I hope that's acknowledged. So...
You ready for a motion?
Please.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the resolution supporting passage of a transportation package by the 2017 Oregon State Legislative Assembly.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So before we go, what do you think's going to happen, Barb?
That's a loaded question, Commissioner. I'm hopeful that something passes. They've got the funding options, three tiers of funding options. So we'll see what ends up being most palatable and being able to be passed at the end of the day.
One of the things in the resolution is significance to Marion County, 30% of these new dollars will... Or 30... Is that... I guess that'd be 30% of the whole total will come. I'm doing that wrong. But Marion County will benefit, is what I'm trying to say.
Correct. 30% goes to counties.
To counties, and then they're split up by size. So, great.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners.
Should we vote?
Yes.
Okay. Are we going to read it?
No.
We're not?
Oh, we don't usually read resolutions, but you'd like to? We can.
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Then... Okay, help me. I was... We have voted everything square? All right. Then let's go ahead and read the resolution. You'd like to start.
Okay. In the matter of a resolution supporting passage of a transportation package by the 2017 Oregon State Legislative Assembly... By the way, Legislative Assembly is the official name of the legislature. That's why I changed it in the motion. All right. So whereas Oregon's transportation system is a network linked by the cities, counties, and the state; whereas a well-maintained transportation system is necessary for a vibrant economy and the safe and efficient movement of people and goods; whereas all sectors of Oregon's economy rely on the transportation system to remain competitive and to connect to the marketplace; whereas addressing the growing need for system-wide maintenance and modernization is essential to economic development in Oregon... I'll just read one more. Whereas Oregon's counties maintain half of the bridges, over half of the non-federal road miles, and tens of thousands of culverts, signs, and other transportation facilities for the movement of goods and services around Oregon.
Whereas according to the 2014 County Road Need Study, Oregon counties face annual shortfalls of $505 million for maintenance, pavement preservation, and capital construction; whereas Marion County anticipates an annual shortfall of $20,880,000. Whereas in order to maintain our county roads, bridges, culverts, and preserve investment in Marion County's transportation system, additional funding is necessary. Whereas the Legislative Assembly and the government... Governor have created the Joint Committee on Transportation Preservation and Modernization to develop a transportation funding package the 2017 legislative session. Whereas the thousands of jobs and improved infrastructure created by a 2017 funding package will benefit Oregon's economy and its workforce for decades to come. Whereas counties would receive 30% of new funds brought in through a transportation funding package, allowing Marion County to address critical transportation needs such as pavement preservation, corridor, safety improvements, bridge rehabilitation, and road construction. Whereas Marion County supports a repeal or major revisions to the Clean Fuels Act created under Senate Bill 324 in 2015 that increased ethanol, which damages engines, and decreases gas mileage. Revenues generated from any fuel tax program must remain in the transportation fund. Now therefore, be it resolved, Marion County Board of Commissioners supports passage of a transportation package by the 2017 Legislative Assembly in order to maintain and preserve Oregon's statewide transportation system.
Very good.
All right.
Lot in there.
Let me just get a little bit organized and see. Bruce is ready to go. The next item, we consider an approval of a license agreement together with Salem Area Mass Transit District, allowing the use of Courthouse Square North Block by Salem Saturday Market to operate public markets on Wednesdays from May through September. Cindy Johnson, Bruce Armstrong, you'd go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bruce Armstrong, Senior Assistant Legal Counsel with Marion County Legal Counsel.
And I'm Cindy Johnson, Business Operations Analyst with the Board of Commissioners Office.
So it was a few months ago, I believe it was, the City of Salem came to our condo board, which is Transit and Marion County jointly operate that. And on behalf... Salem, the city came on behalf of Salem Saturday Market with a proposal to have Salem Saturday Market operate a Wednesday public market on our north block, on the Courthouse Square block, the unimproved pad on the north block of this one-block area. And that was considered by the condo board and passed on. And Cindy Johnson effectively kept this thing moving and was a contact with Salem Saturday Market. But what you have before you is, as many know, there's been a Wednesday public market that's operated on the street. The street gets blocked off just a block or so away from our building here. And Salem Saturday Market is seeking to use the unimproved pad on the north block for its Wednesday markets from May until through September of 2017. So what we've worked, we've worked with Transit, we've worked with Salem Saturday Market. And what you have before you is a license agreement that would authorize the Salem markets to operate each Wednesday, beginning in May, through every Wednesday through September. And this license agreement lays out their responsibilities and protects the county. One important factor is that we have... We want to ensure that the north pad is not harmed in any way through either any kind of scraping or penetration or overloading. We had our engineer look at what the capacity was, and we've included requirements in the license agreement articulating what can and cannot be done on the premises. So for instance, I think it's 100 pounds per square foot cannot be exceeded. There's prohibitions against vehicles coming onto the north block pad. Any vendor stall can't exceed 4,800 pounds, which is even less than the 100 pounds per square foot. And we have standards for when they can access the property, which is essentially 7:00 a.m., the morning of the market, and they have to have everything cleared off by 5:00 p.m. that same day. We've included prohibitions against use of flammables other than propane tanks for cooking if they're a vendor who cooks and sells meals. And there's no penetrations. And then we also worked with... Cindy primarily worked with facilities and developed a plan where facilities would each day before the market inspect the pad, and after the market, inspect the pad just to see if there's any damage that's occurred or if there was any pre-existing damage before each market. So we worked all that out and then identified the costs associated with over that... Over all those months, those inspections, and identified a fee, a license fee of $1,000. So that's the long and the short of it. It's been discussed by the condo board. Salem Saturday Market has signed off on this. Transit has signed off on this. There's no objection from the condo board. And so it's before the Commissioners this morning to consider approval of this license agreement. And we would each be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions?
I don't really have any questions. I don't know if John wants... Have you been... You've been working on this, right?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, if I might. We've been working with the city at some length and their urban development department to try to create a place where this urban market can take... This urban market can take place. We hope in the long run that we can develop a permanent structure there for the market. We have talked to the engineers about... Because we don't want to penetrate the slab, it's not going to be an easy thing to do because they'd like to have covering and then permanent restrooms and those kinds of things. This initial summer will be a test to see how it works there. And then we will try to work out an agreement with the city and with the Saturday Market to develop that north block for a permanent marketplace. And we have... You remember Ken Oliphant? We've contracted with Ken to make sure that the engineering is such that we don't harm that north pad. But I think it'd be good for the city. I think it'll be good for us to use that north block in a way that helps support the City of Salem. We've been working on this for about a year, haven't we Cindy? And, and we think we have all of the safeguards that we can think of to make sure that it works and people are safe. And we talk about the top of that north block as, not ruining it. It's a very expensive waterproof coating on the top there that we don't want to ruin. So that's why we have a lot of these requirements, that they have to be careful as they move their equipment on and off of it. So I'm, I'm really pleased with the work that we've been able to do with the city and the work Cindy's done to make this come about.
I might just have a couple comments. We've worked since it was created to try to find a usage, this is a small, it makes sense to do. I like the idea. I went to Stockholm and they had a market right by the train station next to us. It was just delightful, and it was all cleaned up by noon, and then it was just a community square, and if we could have that happen. The one little bit, it's not a negative really, but I, I hear you talk about, you know, looking at damages and watching things like that, so I assume in this document that it could be stopped immediately without repercussions to anybody if there was a problem.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. We retain rights to that effect. And we have prohibitions against even sliding containers, they have to use dollies, and so, yeah. We have a lot of safeguards in place. But in answer to your question, yes, we can.
And I know what the city's had, that's a nice operation too, the Wednesday markets have been pleasant, so this will bring it to this more stable set location, they can get a little more organized. I am a little concerned about any impacts, I think it's Chamacutus Street, I know there's a parking structure that needs to empty out. Are they going to be into the street at all, or can they contain it all on this pad?
It's my understanding Commissioner, that some of the parking spaces on that, just beyond the north block, will be utilized for some of the vendors. But I actually don't have any more details than that.
They're not going to close the street or its operation anyway, so that'd help the city, so again, a good thing. So.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have talked with the city about that, there will be some parking spaces will be taken up by the vendors, but they will not have to close the street.
Yeah.
And, and we've, and they, the city has been working with businesses on the block too, so I think it'll be all right.
Great.
Yeah, I just think it's going to be so much better, because I, you know, love the Saturday or the Wednesday market, but congestion when the roads are closed has been difficult, so this really is a great solution. So I'll go ahead and approve, move approval of a license agreement with the Salem Area Mass Transit District to allow using Courthouse Square North Block by the City of Salem for Saturday mark, for by Salem Saturday Market to operate public markets on Wednesdays from May through September 2017.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Next items under Community Service, we consider an order that approves a 2016-17 Business Development Grant Application Funding Recommendation in the amount of $50,000 to Gilgamesh Brewing LLC. Sarah Spinks, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, Sarah Spinks, Marion County Community Services Department, and I am here to request approval for an order to allocate $50,000 grant to Gilgamesh Brewing. Community Services oversees our economic development program, and we receive $1.6 million per year in video lottery revenue proceeds. And of that, a portion is budgeted each year for our Business Development Grant Program. This fiscal year, for the 1617 fiscal year, we started with available funds of $243,250. Year-to-date, we have, through the Economic Development Advisory Board recommended and the Board of Commissioners approved, funding for three projects totaling $80,000, which has left us with a remaining balance of $163,250 to award out to businesses through the grant program. So this proposal is for a $50,000 grant toward a $625,000 project with Gilgamesh Brewing to expand their operations and bring in-house their bottling and their canning side of the business, and then also expand the manufacturing of their brews. The project will create 16 jobs over a two-year period. The EDAB reviewed the grant application in March and has brought the application forward, recommending the Board of Commissioners fund the project at $50,000.
All right, questions or comments?
Nope, we went over this at Management Update, and I got all my questions answered there, so.
And the EDAB Board has considered it fully so.
Right.
No good about it.
And we've got money in the bank to do it, right, so that's good. So you ready for motion?
Yep, please.
I'd move the order approving the 2016-17 Business Development Grant Application and Funding Recommendation in the amount of $50,000 to Gilgamesh Brewing LLC.
Second the motion, is moved seconded to prove this grant, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next items under Public Works, an issue we've been working with. Consider approval of an order establishing a $30 annual parking permit, parking pass, to park at North Fork Bear Creek and Salmon Falls Parks. And Cindy Schmidt, good morning, and if you're ready, and try to explain this to everybody, and go ahead.
Good morning Commissioners, again Cindy Schmidt, I'm the County Engineer for our Public Works Department. The, as you're well aware, we've been working for the better part of two years to make a number of improvements to our North Fork Road Southeast recreational corridor up in the Mahema Lyons area. And we've put a number of improvements in place over this time, and one of those was a parking fee that the Board approved in three of our county parks up there in May of 2016. $5 a day fee to park to help address some of the impacts of the overcrowding that we've been experiencing the last several seasons. And in addition, in May of 2016, the Board also delegated authority to the Director of Public Works to establish a similar fee, a parking fee, along the North Fork Road, County Road right-of-way also, to address issues there. So this fee is in the process of being instituted now. And in fact, the parks are opening May 1st, and so we are putting in e-collection stations as we speak and signing to support this effort. One of the things that has come up in our public comment periods for the various issues in the corridor was the need to have some form of a parking pass because we have many visitors who visit the corridor multiple times through the recreational season. So they have requested that we adopt some form of a parking pass similar to what the Forest Service and BLM have in the area also. So the proposal today is an order that would have the Board approve tentatively a $30 annual parking pass that would apply at North Fork Park, Salmon Falls Park, and Bear Creek Park. The, we are prepared in Public Works to establish the program effective May 1st, along with $5 per day. And the proposal at this point is that individuals, if they preferred to buy a parking pass, would be able to do that at the same time at the location on the parks and along the roadway to purchase an annual pass or to purchase the $5 per day parking pass. So they can also do that through our Public Works Department offices, and eventually we hope to have a web interface where they can do that purchase online. So the Public Works Department, the Director will also be, under his delegated authority, establishing this $30 pass along the roadway, and that would go into effect at the same time. Can I answer any questions about the proposal?
Okay, do you have any?
No, we talked about this at Management Update as well, and this has been something we've been working on for a long time to try to align what we're doing with the other federal agencies and other parks that are up there, so. And for people that live up there, paying $5 every time they want to go to a park is probably not what they were exactly excited about, so this is a good solution.
Cindy, you may have said it, but you, would you repeat where people can get these? And if it'll be available online or when it passes?
In the immediate future, they are available, certainly if they wanted to come to Public Works Department, they could purchase them in our office on Silverton Road. The primary option we think folks will take advantage of is purchasing them actually up there when they are at the park. We have established a fee envelope similar to what you'd see in a campground, and they have the option of paying in that envelope for either, and checking either the 30-day pass or the, just a $5 pass. They would then put that ticket into their windshield, and they have to, they will, we'll process those and then we'll mail them the pass that they can use the rest of the year. Until then, they would keep that ticket stub in their window, and I think they have up to 10 days to switch that over to the pass that we would mail them in the mail. The timeline on the web interface, I don't know a specific answer to that, but I think as soon as we could possibly make that function work, we could set that up.
Then I just want to make clear to people that it's, it's for the, our campgrounds and park areas that are county-owned and to park along North Fork Road too, that they'll need this pass. But it isn't going to give anything for any, like Forest Service, whatever else is, people want to want. It's only the county.
That, Commissioner, that's correct, and in fact, the other agencies, BLM and Forest Service, have similar annual parking passes for the same fee up in that area. So they would have to get those separately for their particular.
I hope that doesn't confuse people, but we'll give it a go, and then hopefully maybe we can figure out one fee that lets you in the whole area.
Yeah, they were talking sort of about a kiosk kind of idea at the bottom, right, before people went up?
Yeah, that's still an idea being discussed, it's something that is going to take some time to coordinate, but the concept would be that ideally we could treat this as a single recreational corridor and kind of one fee allows you to park in, in various places regardless of who the authority is. And we're also doing a lot more signing and directional type of information so that visitors can find their way to the various amenities and also marking them better so that it's easier to tell this is a BLM park versus this is a county park versus this is Forest Service area. So I think there's going to be a lot of improvements that the users will benefit from, and certainly the owners of the property up there will benefit from.
Okay, and that's all the questions I have, comments?
So I will go ahead and move approval of an order establishing a $30 annual parking pass to park at North Fork Bear Creek and Salmon Falls Park.
Second the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, call a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you Cindy, and you're sticking around for our next item, which is to consider approval of the Public Improvement Agreement with K&amp;E Excavating, Incorporated for $389,732.50 for construction of St. Louis Road Rail Crossing Safety Project. Again Cindy?
Yes Commissioners, this item before you today is approval of a construction contract. This project has been in the making since about 2011, 2012, when Marion County Public Works was approached by the Oregon Department of Transportation's Rail Division to make some safety improvements at this railroad crossing. This crossing's on St. Louis Road, which is a little ways west of Jervis, which is located on the I-5 corridor, and it's an intersection of our county road, our rural county road, with the main line for the Portland Western Railroad. And apparently there'd been some safety issues and some incidents over the last few years, so it became eligible for federal safety rail crossing funds. So they approached us to deliver this project, and we worked with Railroad and the ODOT Rail folks to develop the project. The project involves signalizing the crossing, it's currently controlled with stop signs. And we, when we signalize that and replace the crossing to a more permanent, more drivable crossing surface, we in turn have to raise the elevation of our roadway such that people can cross it safely at 55 miles an hour, since prior they were coming to a complete stop most of the time. So the project is, it'll be a typical railroad crossing installation, it should be much, much safer. And the new crossing surface should last for many years, it'll be a concrete crossing surface. We advertised the project and received seven bids, which is really a very nice number for the size of a project, and the successful bidder was K&amp;E Excavating, Incorporated, in that amount of 300, roughly $390,000. And we are requesting that the Board approve this contract so that we can move ahead, and the construction would begin as early as April 28th. And in fact, they're having a reconstruction meeting later, I heard, next week I believe. And the construction work would take place through about June 1st. Can I answer any questions about the project or the contract?
Nope, just looking at it. You have any questions? I don't.
No, but I always worry when they assume we're going to say yes with a week to spare, but. They're probably correct.
We, Commissioner, we worry about that too.
Well, it looks like they went through the appropriate processes and got a lot of bids, so. It sounds like it's a high-priority project.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Please.
This is a very important safety project for that crossing, and they've had problems in the past, and I think that the way it's now being designed will help move traffic in a much better fashion across that railroad crossing and make it safer. It's something we'd like to do on all our railroad crossings, but as you can see, they're very expensive.
All right, I have no other questions.
Okay, so I'll move approval of the Public Improvement Agreement with K&amp;E Excavating, Inc. for $389,732.50 for construction, I wonder what they're going to do with that 50 cents, for construction of St. Louis Railroad, Road Rail Crossing Safety Project. Road rail, okay.
We'll have to have an accounting at the end to see when. All right, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you again Cindy.
Thank you Commissioners for both items.
So we have a public hearing scheduled at 9:30, so it's within our time here, and I'll open that public hearing to consider mass gathering permit. Mass Gathering Number 17002 Stryker Supergame, Clerk's File 5723. And Brandon Reich is here and someone.
Derek Stryker was with me. Good morning Commissioners, for the record, I'm Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. The item before you is the application of Supergame, a paintball event, for a small mass gathering permit on exclusive farm use zone property located at 2794 French Prairie Road, Northeast St. Paul. The property is located on the east side of French Prairie Road, approximately 5,000 feet north of the road's intersection with the St. Paul Highway. Surrounding properties in all directions consist of property being farmed in a farm zone. The applicant is requesting to conduct Supergame, a paintball gaming event, as a small mass gathering. The event would take place Friday, March, excuse me, Friday, May 4th, 2017, through Sunday, May 7th, 2017. Estimated attendance is 1,500 people. Based on this information, the proposed event meets the definition of a small gathering. According to the information submitted with the application, sound amplification will be used, no alcohol will be available, and no fireworks will be used or shown. The applicant states that sound amplification will be used for public address announcements and as background music. The applicant states there will be no amplified sound after 10:00 PM or before 7:00 AM each day. Quiet periods will be enforced by onsite security. The mass gathering ordinance requires the applicant to coordinate with various governmental agencies to ensure there are adequate facilities and services available. These agencies include Marion County Public Works, Marion County Sheriff, Environmental Health, Risk Management, and the local fire district, which in this case is St. Paul. Each of these agencies was provided with a copy of the request and given an opportunity to comment on its requirements. All of the Marion County agencies approved the plans submitted by the applicant, and the St. Paul Fire District requested that the applicant allow it to inspect the property prior to the event. The Board has the option to continue the public hearing, close the public hearing and leave the record open, close the public hearing and approve, deny, or modify the proposal. Staff recommends the Board approve the request, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. With that available for any questions you may have.
All right, are there any questions?
Not really, I just was thinking about when my son was a big paintball enthusiast and always looking for places where he could do paintball, including Jory Park, where he got in a little bit of a conversation with our parks person at the time. It wasn't Russ, it was before then, because it was when he was still in high school, but anyway. So this has probably got a huge following, right? Paintball is a, is a big, big deal.
Big deal. We run, Warpaint Paintball is our local shop on Portland Road. We've been doing that for 19 years now. Supergame was a bi, a bi-yearly event. We moved it to one year, a one-year event about five years ago. So we've got, this is our 50th anniversary, so this is a big one for us. It's, it's been good, I've been a part of Supergame for 10 years now, and it's just grown into this wonderful event. It's a very family-oriented event. As much on the field is, is good, it's the camaraderie off the field after everyone gets off the event shares their stories, it's, it's a very. off the event and shares their stories, it's a very, very family-oriented event for us.
And you might have mentioned this, and maybe I just missed it, but how's the clean, I mean, how does the cleanup happen? Because that was the conversation that Christian, my son, had with the parks people, is, you know, they were hitting signs and, you know, plants and things like that, and then it was splattered all this lovely paint all over, so how does, how does that work?
The playfield is actually 60 acres of exclusively, it's exclusively used for paintball. He actually owns a paintball field there.
Oh, okay, so there's a lot of paint on the field then?
Yeah, it's a, it's a developed paintball field, it's actually zoned as a gun club for the paintball portion of his property.
Interesting.
It's a park, they did a lot of upgrades to the roads to, you know, meet those conditions for a gun club, but, so no cleanup on the field, the paint's all water-based, so it rinses off when the next time it rains, it's pretty well cleaned up.
That's great.
So either one, this is, I believe went on last year and prior years too, and just my concerns were with neighbors, and any other violations or problems that have come up, have there been any?
No.
No. Okay. This would also, just as an aside, you came in and asked about in the future on ones that are routine without problems, not coming before the board and actually Planning Director making the determination, which might be easier for all involved if there are no problems, and it sounds like this would be a prime example.
Yeah, getting a multi-year permit, so this might work.
Fine, are there any of the comments I've left out, no one's testified for or against otherwise?
Planning hasn't received any comments.
All right.
By email or phone calls or anything. I think they've had, they've had good experiences in the past, and they've obviously been good with their neighborhood because haven't had any, anything at all.
All right, then, ready for a motion, close the hearing?
Okay. So move that we close the public hearing, looks like we're supposed to close the record also, is that, that's on the suggested?
Yes, close the hearing, close the record.
And then approve the mass gathering permit, subject to the conditions described by Public Works.
All right, I'll second the motion to close the record, close the hearing, and accept the recommendation as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, and good luck on the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So that concludes our meeting and public hearing, the last to do is to read the places we'll be together the coming week. The first is, and I'm not sure that there's, this is appropriate here, but we have at noon for where the places will be together, Mount Angel Chamber County Community Forum, that'll be at the Mount Angel Library Community Room, 290 East Charles Street, today at noon, and it looks like we'll make that fine. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 20th, 7 to 8 o'clock, Community Stakeholders Meeting, State Capitol, Room H278, 900 Court Street Northeast in Salem, that's with some of our legislative delegation, and that's followed by a meeting with the city of Salem at the Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street in Salem, that's at 8 o'clock. Monday, the 24th of April, Calendar Review, Sovereign Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem, followed in the same location at 9 o'clock for what we call and have as management update, where we go over issues that are coming before the county. Also on Monday at 11 to 12, a VOC CAO meeting, executive session if needed, pursue it to RS 192660, 2 A, B, D, F, H, and I, that's Sovereign Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Tuesday, 8 to 10, the 25th, Community Correction Board, Sovereign Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Salem. That's followed at 10:30 to 11:30, a one-on-one department head with Assessor Tom Rolfings, Sovereign Conference Room, again, 555 Court Street, Salem. Tuesday, the 25th, 3 o'clock to 5, Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network Executive Committee Meeting, 2965 Ryan Drive, Southeast, Suite 150. And later that evening, at 4:30 on the 25th, a ribbon-cutting ceremony in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month, and that's at the Liberty House, 385 Taylor Street Northeast in Salem. Next Wednesday, the 26th, 9 to 1, Board Session here in the Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street Northeast, 1st floor. And then a special event, Wednesday, 12 o'clock to 1:30, Administrative Professionals' Day Luncheon at Madison Delaney Grill, 5745 Inland Shores Way, North Kaiser. That's followed Wednesday, the 26th, at 3 to 4, a Tom Frye's IT Director's Retirement, everybody's retiring. Senator Hearing Room, 1st floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And the final event, and a fun one, 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock, Saniam Awards Night at the Saniam High School Auditorium, 265 Southwest Evergreen Street in Mel City. So, seems like the pace is picking up, and we're doing lots and lots of things.
Yeah, I think there's a correction on the community corrections part, it should be 8:30.
All right.
Rather than 8, so we can fix that.
Well, maybe we'll just have them all sit there, waiting for us.
I know, I won't be there at 8.
Why do you care? All right, anything else?
Well, you're going to Mount Angel today, you and the sheriff.
Is that how it settled out? I hadn't heard.
Yeah.
Nobody from Public Works?
No, sheriff's going to be there with you, it's already been advertised that way.
Should have made Cindy come, she would have liked.
Yeah, well, you can probably handle the Public Works questions, sheriff can handle all the homeless questions and the...
Jail questions.
Jail questions and all of those are...
Truly the reason I asked, and I think you second, that's what people are concerned about when we go out, if you really analyze it, our public safety and roads.
Right, exactly.
So I might as well give them just exactly that.
Yep.
But you will miss a nice lunch.
I will. But I will be heading to see my little grandson, so that beats any lunch.
I think I'd agree with you.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
No.
Gloria, we haven't really called on you for a lot of, one little item, all right.
Nothing to add.
She tries to keep us correct, or keep me correct more specifically, and does a reasonable job. All right, let's call this meeting adjourned.